From this year as it was last year. The only thing that we're proposing to possibly do, if we do make a rate increase, it's basically gonna be just to be more in line with our neighboring communities. Maybe it's a little bit higher than some of our communities, maybe it's gonna be lower than some of our other communities. We do have a sewer debt, I mean, a water debt reduction on there that you've been paying all along at a hundred and forty-four dollars annually, which is about ten dollars a month, I think is what it boils down to. So there is gonna be a slight increase in that, but it's not gonna be much, and I got it broke down. But if you want me to go ahead and go over what I was gonna propose to the board, and I think everybody's got a copy, of what I do want to propose and make it, and maybe it would save some of you from coming to have to come up and speak. It's up to you, but I can go ahead and let you know what I got on paper here. I know the recommendation from the audit company, like we were all saying, everybody's looking at possibly a three-hundred percent increase in their, in their water and sewer bills. Keep in mind, it is a water and a sewer bill, it is two utilities that you do have. No different than your electric, your gas, your telephone, you know, whatever you might have, so. So the sewer, the sewer debt will increase sixty dollars annually. So you can break that down monthly if you want to, but it's not a big increase, but it will be sixty dollars per year increase. I guess that would be, you know, five, five dollars? Yeah, five dollars, uh, that's five dollars a month. The sewer rates to serve will increase at the same rate, it would be sixty dollars annually, it'll go from one-twenty to one-eighty annually, from what you're currently paying. Your wastewater disposal fee will increase, a hundred and sixty-four dollars annually, and it'll go basically from three-hundred-and-sixty you're currently paying to four-hundred-and-sixty-four annually. You have not been charged a meter fee since day one, and I know you all live in chlorophyll, and you got free water since day one, so. You're sitting in front of us, you know, you know, at the same time, we, we realize that, we're not trying to recoup that cost, we're just trying to bring things back into alignment. The two-hundred-and-forty dollars annually is basically what you should be charged for a meter fee, it's part of your, I guess, for meter, meter maintenance and infrastructure work that needs to be charged. All of our communities basically charging, I think, two-hundred-and-forty dollars annually is a very reasonable price, so that's gonna be added to your bill. And the water units are gonna go up. Obviously, we pay more for water to Great Lakes Water, almost double on what we're charging, but it's gonna be increased to three-point-three, three, it's gonna increase three, three-point-three-six cents, you know, three, let's say, three-point-three cents per unit, which is, one unit is one cubic foot, which is seven-point-four-eight gallons of water. So you're looking at about an increase of about a third of a cent per gallon, if you really wanna know by the gallons. So your rate's gonna go from point oh-three-seven-four-five that you're currently paying per cubic foot to point oh-seven-one per cubic foot. So in a nutshell, it's probably about a seventy-five to eighty percent increase on what you're currently paying. So if you're paying two-hundred dollars right now, let's just say four-hundred dollars, your bill's gonna go up, you know, about three-hundred dollars quarterly, every three months. So, and also your water is something you can regulate. You know, maybe you can't water grass as much, and maybe, you know, get low-flow showers or toilets. It's just things, just try to be more aware of it, but it's, like I said, we're not proposing to do anything that our neighboring communities aren't already doing, you know, so. And then there's gonna be an increase if you're just on sewer users, I don't know if there's people here that are not in a water district, that are on sewer only. I think Tom, you are, I can give you a breakdown on that. The non-residential, uh, your monthly usage fee that you're currently paying is thirty dollars, thirty dollars a month, I think you're paying one-twenty? I think Mike went through this with you earlier today, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Anyways, your increase is gonna be nineteen-fifty monthly, which is gonna be forty, um, it's gonna go, your monthly usage fee's gonna go from thirty to forty-nine dollars and fifty cents a month, which is gonna be about a hundred and fifty dollars a quarter. You're ready, um, non-industri, I mean, non-residential, is there any commercial or industrial users in here? No? Okay. So that's kind of on the proposed part of the residential sewer and water rates. So did anybody else wanted to speak? Tris, come on up. Yeah, you're a sewer user, but not a water user, right?
I'm a sewer user, and I was here last week, and I made some statements that were accurate, even though I was called out on them.
Okay.
So I'd like to clarify those one more time.
Okay.
I brought the minutes from the meetings, 'cause I've been here since two thousand and eight.
That the tap fees?
These are from two thousand and fifteen, these are the minutes from March. So back then, we were paying, it was proposed that we add onto the sewer plant in Romeo, and the charge on the sewer taps, and I'm only gonna speak for sewer, since I'm not on water, were seventy-five-hundred dollars a tap. That was back in March two thousand and fifteen. The administration at that time felt that was, we couldn't get any business in here at that rate, and lowered those down to fourteen-hundred dollars. And that's on record. And that difference, we, we need to make up, because we depended on that money to cover the plant expansion for Romeo. So to put things in perspective, that was passed on, we lost six-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars that first year, 'cause we sold out a hundred taps at fourteen-hundred dollars. That said, and this is to put it in perspective for water users, all of us on sewer had to absorb that. We didn't like it, we had to absorb it, but it was over quite a few years, which is what I think the water people need to. I think they need to pay their share, they used it, they need to pay it. But I think, like us on sewer, it took quite a few years, but we're in the black on that, but we had to pay. We weren't happy, we, I came up here complaining every time there was an increase. But we are now in the black, and I think we need to give the same consideration to the water users. I don't think we should be writing off any of that debt, they did use it, it is their responsibility. But I think that you need to allow them time to pay that, 'cause it is a lot that you're asking. So anyways, I just wanted to clarify that, that we did, we took a big loss there, and we had to pay it.
Clearly, we do charge three-thousand dollars per tap, though.
We do now, but at the time, and like I said, this was back in two thousand and fifteen.
Right.
And there were people that did pay at seventy-four-hundred dollars a tap, or seventy-five-hundred dollars a tap. They dropped it so much that the rest of us sewer users had to pay it.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Trish.
Tris.
You can call me.
Tris, sorry, Tris.
It's close. Thank you, Tris.
All right. Hi, good evening, Jennifer Squallie, one-three-two-four-four, Hannah Drive, Cloverfield. First, just like to say, my wife and I moved in three weeks ago, so we can contribute to me that debt you were just talking about. Um, yeah. And also, I mean, not only for people just moving, people, there's houses, lads going up in the back, you see sign, you know, going up, like, on the mountain. Um, I mean, all these people are building a house, right, with no idea that rates are gonna be jumping up by two-hundred percent, so that seems unfair, right? Um, I mean, people are building a house, right, they're moving in this fall, the summertime, they have no idea rates are gonna increase, that would seem fair to me. Um, I guess I'm just trying to figure out the business case behind this, right? Um, I always, you're going to a company that come up with these numbers, do you know, um, you know, clarify, you know, the mental analogy behind it? You know, how many guys tell these numbers, that's a hundred-and-fifty percent increase, or ten-hundred percent increase? Um, you know, such the big jump, or like, or like, or like, or like, a ten percent increase, you know, quarterly, fifty percent, what, what would that be? Um, I'm just curious how the, the numbers can allow.
I just mentioned about, we're looking at the two-hundred percent from the auditor, but I just said it was gonna go up to eighty, eighty percent, not two-hundred percent. So I mean, I don't know where you're getting to two-hundred percent. This is something that I had proposed, we haven't even voted on it yet either. But we use the auditor, because that's a professional outside source, and that's their business and what they do. And it was a free-of-charge service that he did for the township. So, I mean, we're not auditors, and we don't know, you know, everything, so we use a professional firm to do that, that that's their specialty, so.
Yeah, I guess when I spoke to you last week, I think we can.
I did, I thought I was covered a lot of these questions.
Yeah, I thought it was a hundred or two-hundred percent increase.
Well, that's what we're proposing to do, but I, I, I just read the numbers to you here, and it's not a two-hundred percent increase. It's, and then we're gonna look at it again in six months, but this is what, hopefully, we're gonna see what maybe something like this is gonna do for us. And I think it's gonna definitely make a turn in the right direction, you know, but you're not only paying on sewer debt, you gotta look at infrastructure and repairs. You know, we got a lot, there's a lot of things that we gotta consider. You got lift station on your, I mean, we would be happy to turn that maintenance and that cost on that lift station over to the homeowners, if you guys were so chooseful. So, but I, I don't think you realize that costs and the maintenance is involved in just taking care of that lift station that's out in front of your, in front of your complex right now. We have to look at everything. It's not just the water you're using, but it's the infrastructure also that we gotta consider. So, and again, this is, we're not proposing anything that's not being, you know, you're not getting from your neighboring communities. I mean, that's what, you guys are coming here, and, and, and I'm not, we're not trying to rob you guys blind. We, we're part of the community, we're on sewer, some of us are on sewer users, and, you know, everything else, we, we feel for you. We're, we're trying to just do the best we can and just try to stay afloat.
Sure. So anyways, how urgent is it, 'cause I mean, you said six months, you gotta look, uh?
Well, everybody said, why didn't you do it two years ago? I mean, that's how urgent it, we should've done it two years ago, and we waited till we corrected a lot of the, a lot of the issues that we had. I mean, we can't really come up with a solution until we correct the problem, and we had, like, it's not been, not any secret, we couldn't account for two-point-two million gallons of water that we're unaccounted for in the township. You know, when you get billed for two-point-two million gallons of water, and you don't know where that water's gone to, so you can't even collect for it. I mean, that's the stuff that we needed to correct first, which this administration's done a great job of bringing this, turning this township around and getting these issues taken care of. And now is all we're asking to do is just try to bring our, our fee schedules more in line with what our neighboring communities are.
Well, it's not only what our neighboring communities are paying, but it's also what we're paying from Great Lakes. I mean, you, we can't, we can't sustain buying our water at sixty cents a cubic foot and selling it to you for thir, three cents, or thirty cents a cubic foot. I mean, I'm sure a lot of people in here are in business, you don't buy things at a, at a certain cost and sell it cheaper than.
So who come, who come up with that in the first place, then?
The Great Lakes Water Association.
Who would be voting against that?
We don't have an opportunity to vote against what Great Lakes Water's gonna charge. They're a very strict, very arrogant, very hard-to-deal-with company that's got no room for negotiations at all.
There's eighty municipalities that they service water to, we are the highest, we pay the highest amount out of the eighty municipalities.
By fifty, who's we?
We, Bruce Towns.
Okay.
Yeah. I printed off a bunch of stuff in that, in that packet.
Yeah.
Some of it, you'll see, it's pretty self-explanatory.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Chino.
Only one question. What presentation that lady made said, sorry, one more. She said we're at the limit.
Do you follow our public comment policy?
Yeah.
Timing?
We're at the limit.
No, you.
Are we at the limit with the water?
A second, a second chance isn't allowed unless you agree. So he's correct, we got a lot of people, you know, to be unfortunate, we've got a really long lead.
I wanted to ask that the first time, because, as I said, whatever, the order, excuse me, the presentation, it says that we're at the limit with the water, ink, input, I mean, incoming? In other words, this is it?
It was sewer, not water.
Just sewer.
Yeah, that's sewer, right. Sewer capacity.
My name's Chris, I'm on Hannah, one-three, one-zero-one. You know, it's a substantial increase, and if you take that into consideration, if we're having such a struggle with this water situation, why should we stay on the city water if we can't cover these funds? If it's gonna cost us two-thousand, three-thousand dollars a year for it, why not just dig wells? Why not just take it out and just remove it completely from the city source and get rid of it? If it's not doing us any good and we're paying all this money, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, like you said. Can't buy it at sixty and sell it for thirty, and if people are getting frustrated, what, ninety percent of Bruce is all on wells anyways? So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us to do that, and if Great Lakes is that tough at negotiation, then take the negotiation out of it.
That, that's not gonna happen, you guys, you moved into the water and sewer district, we just can't say we're not gonna, you know, provide sewer and water to that district anymore, you know?
Is there something that stops us from digging our own well?
That would be something you have to take up with the Macomb County Health Department, to be honest with you.
So like, our neighboring communities, like, you guys keep speaking of Washington, where my aunt lives, they have a certain well they can dig for their sprinkler systems and hoses. Like that, is that something we're able to do?
I don't know if they're allowed to dig another well, if it's their current well, they had and they went on to.
No, they're on city water, but they're.
But they had a well prior to city water.
No, they're able to dig a new well, is what they did.
What size property do they have?
Uh, just like Cloverfield, very, very similar.
I can look into it, I mean, if you wanna leave me your number, I'd be more than happy to call and let you know about that. I know if they were originally on water, or wells, they could stay on wells as long as their well, you know, was operable, or they could switch over to city water, use their well for irrigating their water, but I don't think that, once you're on municipal water, they won't let you usually go in the well.
I've never heard of that, my daughter lives in Washington, and she complains about her water bill, but.
Yeah, you should ever look into it, because.
I'll ever look into it, but that don't.
Stuff comes into their house, it's city water, but just their sprinkler system and hoses.
They might've put a diff, but they might've put a different meter on it.
They did, and it's a meter bill in a lot lesser amount.
Right.
That's an area maintenance meter, that's not, that's not a well, that's an area maintenance meter.
Bruce, do you have an option, the second meter?
Do you have that option for a second meter?
Yes.
We currently don't have that option, but we will, we will be working on something on that, so if you wanna get with me, I will have that in place by next year, we'll be able to get an area maintenance meter, we won't be paying sewer.
That'd be a good, yeah, I'll turn it up a little bit.
Absolutely, for water and the grass, that's what it's for, washing the car, absolutely. Sure. Yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Um, anybody wanna discuss anything with the sewer and water?
You wanna, I don't know, you wanna go through this one more time with us?
Well, as you guys see, I, I was like, kinda shared with the, the audience a little bit, I did put the, this together, I did take into a lot of considerations, and also, you know, considering that we're just like the rest of these people out here, trying to raise a family, we live in, you know, care about the money we're making, and we work hard for it. I, I got this down for, considering what I already wanted us to do, a hundred-and-ninety-two percent to two-hundred percent increase. I got this, what I thought was gonna work, and it's something to start with, it's a, like, a seventy-five to eighty-two percent increase on our sewer and water. Um, I think it's something that the board should take in consideration and look at, and we can reevaluate after six months if, if we gotta do any changes or any, either maybe we gotta raise, or maybe we gotta lower, but at least we got six months to do an evaluation on it. And I think in six months, at this rate here, our sewer debt will come off, and we will remove that as promised to the residents and the community, so we can eliminate the sewer debt. You know, so, I think that you have that on yours also, Tris. Tom, you got on yours, so.
Are these rates gonna stay like this, Ben, or are they coming off eventually?
Well, we need to, we need to discuss that as a board right now, so public comments is closed.
So I did just make the comment that we're gonna look at this as far as a short-term basis, and we will be reevaluating this after six months, on the rates that we would be proposing to doing, it's like, anybody that's got your bill, and I mean, I don't know what your bills are, but I did look at your chlorophyll bills, and they vary, they're on a low end, and that's what you were looking at, Hannah Drive was a low end, and maybe on Julius was the high end. And it's gonna be a substantial increase, but it's not that bad if you go by monthly, and it's a utility, and I mean, I mean, I'm on well and septic fields, and it's not like it's a free ride, I mean, I pay a lot of money for my well and septic, and my well goes out, it's a ten-thousand-dollar charge, you know, so. Um, I mean, this is what we're gonna do, and this is kinda what I'm gonna make a motion, go ahead and propose to the board, take a look at this, and maybe adopt this into a, um, into our ordinance, and give it a try after six months, and do a, do a reevaluation. Mike also, Tremblay had mentioned to me through some communications today, that he may, he felt that maybe we should put some kind of a committee together, possibly, um, to try to, to work on this, you know, committee that just, and we could make it as a committee member from somebody in the audience, it doesn't, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that, you know, so. But at the present time, I'd like to make a motion to go, did you wanna talk more about the bill you said, or about this increase, Frank?
Um, no. I mean, so, in this, what's factored in here is the price of water, and then, and then there's some extra in there for infrastructure and repairs, correct?
Right, so your sewer rate to serve fees is, that's basically your, your repairs, that's for infrastructure and maintenance. Also, your meter fee, that's also considered part of your, your annual maintenance, that would go into infrastructure repairs, lift station, meters, water main break, you know, any of the above. The, uh, the cubic feet of water, that's the commodity charge, it's, everything else is above, and, you know, aside from, that's what we pay, that's the water itself, which is basically about what we pay. We're making point one cent per cubic foot. So every, for every seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water you guys use, the township's only putting point one cent in, in our, in our account. That's all, so.
Okay.
Um, any, anything else? So I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and have this, try to get this, or put this fee schedule into place, get it, adopt into our ordinance. I wanna have Christine Anderson take a look at it, have her type up the, the wording on it. I don't think it's gonna be completed by July first, I think it may have to wait until, I mean, if we can get it done by July first, that'd be great, but I think it might, it might not go into effect until your, um, August first billing. So, and then, so August, November, October, man.
So what's your motion?
February. So we relooked at it next March. So I would make a motion to go ahead and approve to adopt this fee schedule contingent upon approval from our attorney, Christine Anderson, and putting it in wording on our ordinance, it'd be amendment to our ordinance.
For a period of?
Six months, for a period of six months.
Second.
Second by Frank. Do we have any other question, another discussion?
Yeah.
Can we get a roll call Dana, please?
No, I have a discussion, please.
Okay, okay.
Um, number one, I, I have an issue with the sewer issue. When we had the work group issue, I asked about, had anybody contacted the prior committee that was in place when the rates were increased about two-hundred-and-fifty percent? And they stayed in place for a while? And I haven't heard any feedback on that, and the urgency for sewer is not what it is for water. So I have a problem with the sewer without doing any additional homework. As far as the water, I think I can live with these increases, provided that we take a look at a number of different options. Because what this, this is a point in time, this does nothing on providing what the state of Michigan wants, which is a plan. This is not a plan, this is just a, an increase. It doesn't do anything to talk about the debt repayment. One of the things that I, I discussed that's not included in the motion is a write-off of the, of some of the receivable, or all of the receivable, from the water debt, from the general fund, or from the, the general funds receivable from the water fund. And the same thing for sewer, that hasn't been talked about.
That's, yeah.
We've been in office for eighteen months, and now we have a sudden urgency today. And we've only discussed this in a work group, and then today, so I, I just have a little heartburn of that. The other thing is, you have to look at the impact on the very last line, the non-residential water to increase, that's over a hundred percent increase to, to industrial base. We have one large industrial customer that helps absorb our fixed cost. If that person leaves, your, your, our water issue gets multiplied by at least three from where it is today. So I think some consideration needs to be made with what we do with our industrial rate. As far as the committee, I think that needs to be part of the motion, that the committees need to be formed, they need to be formed today. So those are my arguments.
So, this is not a suit.
I think it's too early to do sewer, without any further study. Uh, water, I'm okay with this intermediate thing, as long as we do all the other things that I stated, which is to have two or three options on how to handle this, including the debt, with ten- or fifteen-year projections for two or three different options that the board can consider, long, long term.
I have a tendency to agree with you on that, Mike, I also have, I had a concern with this, both the sewer and the water debt, and how we apply that to users, and, you know, a gentleman said, you know, not everyone has been on water. I mean, there's new homeowners coming in, and now they're being asked to assume this. I have a, I have an issue with both water and sewer regarding the sewer debt, and, regarding the sewer and water debt. And then also, without including a, a plan, at least even a short-term plan, for the commercial accounts as well. I think all of these things are needed and need to be considered, and I do like the idea of putting a commission together and defining a timeframe that we come to some conclusion on, at least, short-term for it.
The sewer and water debt has been there, whether you, I mean, it's not some, it's something you moved into, it's, it's there anyways. I mean, it's not like we're just, we're not implementing it tonight, and it's not something we're proposing to do, we're just implementing an increase, and it's a small increase, it's sixty dollars a year annually. It's not even that much. We need to correct our problem, you guys aren't in the office, you don't hear what's going on. We hear it from, uh, from Rhonda, we gotta come up with a plan, we gotta come up with something. We, with us seeing here and not having a plan, and then putting a committee together, I mean, I agree that we could have a committee forum, but without doing anything, I don't think that we should wait to do nothing right now, and I think that this is the time that we need to do something. And I feel, I'm not trying to just, I mean, it's gonna come eventually, and maybe it's gonna come even harder if we wait any longer. It's like, right now is the time to make our increases.
I'm not recommending we, we do nothing, if you heard that, then that's not what I intended. What I'm making an argument for is, um, on, on the water increases, for the, for the residential, I'm okay with what you have proposed, but we have to add a whole bunch of other conditions to that motion for me to say yes, 'cause we can't just do that alone. The other thing you gotta, I'm not good with is the non-residential water increase, 'cause I think there's a risk of losing our largest water customer, which makes.
Largest water customer we got is the reason why we're in the predicament we're in right now.
It's a lot of the, yes.
Well, we're not, we're, we're going upside down because of that contractor, because of that, that large water user. What are we gonna lose if that, if that guy ends up leaving the community, what are we gonna, what are we gonna lose? Why are we trying to keep him?
You know, these people. Two-hundred-thousand dollars a year, that's get distributed to many users. You lose, you lose seventy-five percent of your gallons. You can take that fixed cost, which is equal to the variable cost, and that becomes not point-six-one, but point-two, point, uh, one-two, one, one-point-two.
But the fixed cost, who's paying for it?
I'm just saying, that fixed cost gets distributed over a lot fewer gallons.
But that two-hundred-thousand dollar, where does that two-hundred-thousand dollar a year fixed cost come from? I'm just asking you.
It was, it was shared with us at the work group meeting, the sixteen-thousand dollars a month.
Well, I agree.
Fixed fee. We don't even know what that is. So I would ask one more thing that'd be done, if, if you wanted affirmative vote from me. We have to amend the motion, is we need help. We need help with Great Lakes Water, 'cause we're a small puppy. We need help from the county, we need help from the county, you're rapping for Great Lakes Water, and we need help from Candace Miller.
It's not gonna come. I already talked to Brian Baker again today, nobody can negotiate anything with Great Lakes Water. We have an opportunity, I'm gonna reach out to Maria from Fishback, that's the only other option I got, talking again with the guy that sits on the board with Great Lakes Water, it's not negotiable. We have our opportunity next year, and they're gonna look at one peak day, at one peak time, when we go over on it. I've done all this work, I've done all this research, and I'm not saying it's not something I don't, and I'm not gonna go back to my previous trustee, or my previous treasurer, to set this up in the first place, it's not, it's corrected, but it's, I'm not gonna ask them for an answer or a solution, I'm just not gonna do it.
I'm not asking you to ask them for a solution.
Well, you asked me, why don't we go back to them, and then ask them?
Because when I had that plan, it was supposed to correct the situation, now we're coming back with an eighty percent increase, again.
Wow.
I think that's a large increase, without understanding what their, their stuff was based on.
Right.
I, I would just ask if your, a, a motion is amendable.
To, to state what?
Some of the things that I just said, if you want specifics, I'll give specifics. I just wanna ask, is it amendable? If it's not, then I'll vote accordingly, if it's amendable, then I'll provide some suggestions for an amendment.
You're asking that question amendable, the, the Great Lakes Water charge?
Mike's motion.
Oh.
I mean, I, I'd like to know what it, to be amended to, I'm not, like I said, I'm not, I'm not, I can't, we can't negotiate with Great, it's not like I can come up to, to negotiate with Great Lakes Water tomorrow, it just isn't gonna happen. I mean.
Yeah, but that was one thing I mentioned, I mentioned about six things.
We need to drop our peak flow time. When they, when they tell us that we gotta, we cannot exceed seven-hundred-and-fifty MCFs during the day, and we exceed that seven-hundred-and-fifty MCFs during the day, it's because of one primary water user that we're getting on the chin, and the rest of these people in this community are getting on the chin. If that guy picked up and left today, I don't think it, we, we, we'll get another billers in there, but it won't be a high-water user, and they're still gonna share the water costs, Mike. No different than what he's doing currently right now. You know, I'm just saying, it's like, we're still gonna get a user on the system, but we're not gonna have somebody that's gonna put us over on our, on our flows.
I'm just saying that if you got a user that's using seventy-five percent, and they're, they're helping to absorb seventy-five percent of that fixed cost, when they go away, you get a whole smaller base to absorb that.
They're driving all our costs, so.
I understand they're driving.
They might be the reason why we're not gonna get people in the community, 'cause maybe they're.
But if they leave, it may create a bigger problem than we have, and I don't know if anyone's even looked at that or considered that.
So, I mean, this is a six-month of trial period, and putting this down together for six months to be reevaluated after six months. We can do a lot of things between now and six months, we can appoint a committee, we can look at, you know, whatever you need to.
I'm just asking, let's make that part of the motion, so there's a commitment to do that.
Well, I mean-
Or you could do another motion after this one.
Well, I'd like it all part of one, to be quite honest with you, because I may not, I may not agree with approving the rates without those included in the motion. That's at least my-
I don't wanna vote on a committee without knowing who's gonna be on the committee, to be honest with you.
You can vote to form a committee and form it later.
Alright, so then I'll, I'll amend my motion to state that, I don't even know.
I don't know, I, I got a whole bunch of things and I'll ask you what your thoughts are.
I mean, I don't, I mean, primarily, we need to address what we have in front of us right now. I mean, I know that there's other issues that we need to look at. And I mean, I, like I said, that we're, I don't wanna add, I don't wanna put motion together, a bunch of items on it, you know, I wanna-
Yeah.
It's the main thing. I mean, I said that we would be more than happy to put a committee together, you know.
Can, can you just, from my information, restate those, um, contingencies, Mike?
In that, in that period, the six-month period, during that period that we work on multiple options to consider.
Can I, can I just stop one second? Can I ask you why over the past couple of eighteen months, we haven't worked on any of those options already? I'm just asking.
It was never brought up. A rate increase was never brought up.
Alright.
A few months back, we just said, let's fix, let's fix our fundamental water problems before we ask for a rate increase. So, and the rate increase never came up.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that was a, a year ago when we said there's issues. That's when you started finding out though.
Okay.
So, I, I'm just-
Always assumed we'd have to raise rates, I mean-
Yeah, I, I don't disagree that we have to raise rates.
I'm just looking for what's gonna happen in that six-month period. So, six months from now, we're not coming here to revisit it and none of the concerns-
Have been addressed.
The long, the long-term concerns have not been addressed. So, it needs to be part of the motion, so we have some objectives over the next six months. That's all I'm suggesting. If, if you're willing to do that, I'll, I'll throw some out and they can either be accepted or rejected.
I, I can assure you that since I've started this job fifteen, eighteen months ago, there's probably not a week that it hasn't gone by or a day sometimes. Or sometimes it's a week and maybe sometimes not every two weeks, that we have not addressed and tried to take care of the water and sewer issues in our community. One way or another, one shape, way, shape or form, the next six months, I'm not gonna stop trying to get our sewer and water issues corrected. Try to save money for our residents in our community. You know that that's not, you know, you, you know my passion here and how I feel about it and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna stop right now.
Mike, I know how you feel and I know you're passionate about it. I know you, and you personally have accomplished a lot. But I think we have to have specific things over the next six months. To have before us six months from today that we can look at, so that we can make a very good educated decision on what happens for the next years. One is we need ten or fifteen-year projections. With an assumed cost for water, that's not where it's at today. We need, we need to look at doing a, uh, metering system in the industrial district because our largest customer is the one who is creating most of our issues with peak usage. And there has to be a penalty for, um, usage during the day. We have to enforce our ordinances. When we have people watering the grass when they're not supposed to. And, and that can be self-enforced by some of the neighbors too. Because that peak usage is what's driving the cost of Great Lakes water. Just drive your street. So, use water when they're not supposed to. Notify, notify our code, our ordinance enforcement officer and he'll do that.
What is peak usage, sorry?
So, basically, they want you to water from like nine PM until six AM at night. That's, so peak usage-
So, wash, shower and brushing your teeth and watering your grass all at the same time.
Is that easy to find on the website?
No.
So, what do you?
I think the other thing that needs to be considered over the next six months is writing off some of the receivable for, uh, water especially, because water was brought in here specifically to draw industry in here. It was a decision made by a prior board, but prior two boards actually. Um, but we need to look at that. That's not to be, be a consideration.
Isn't that all things that the committee would be part of, you know, that would be the process, the committee would bring all this information?
Setting objectives for that committee is part of the motion.
What can I just make the motion to be, the committee?
I think those specific objectives need to be stated.
Can we make the committee motion later and have those, those objectives with the committee motion?
Comfortable with that, because I think that approving these rates should be dependent upon what we're gonna do six months from today. That's my view. I don't know what anybody else feels about it. I'm just asking you, you've been in the motion.
I mean, I agree with you. We can't just do something without thinking about, you know, what the outcome's gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, my preference today would have seen a ten-year plan based on a set of assumptions that says ten years from today, we're gonna be at this point and, uh, we're gonna be in a healthy position. Right now, we just have, this is kind of a Band-Aid fix, which I'm okay with because it's not an unreasonable rate increase given where our cost is today and it's a short-term agreement. But, we need to have some objectives over the next six months to address this. And they need to be stated in the motion, is my opinion.
Well, if I rescind my motion, you wanna go ahead and put a motion together for him like that? I mean, it, I think it, I think it can be a separate motion later when we form a committee, is all I'm thinking.
Well, if it is a separate motion, I'm gonna vote no on the first one, I'll tell you that right now, because I think, I think the two need to be linked.
But again, I mean, I'm going on the fact of why did it, why are we looking at just starting now? I mean, why haven't we started before? I know I have. You know, in the pre, in the past fifteen-
I think I've already said that, 'cause the, the, the decision was made at that time is to not address the rates until we fix some of the fundamental infrastructure issues.
Which we've done and that's-
Which we've done, so now we're at this point.
Right. But I don't wanna complicate this any more than I have to. And then also, the more we, I mean, I just assume making a simple motion, get it to the attorney, from the committee with the contingencies on the committee. That's my, my thoughts.
So, you're gonna add a committee to your motion?
I'll add a committee in motion, but I think Mike wants to see that the committee's got some requirements that he'd like to see from the committee.
And I, I have heartburn over the sewer rate increase, without having any prior knowledge from what the, how we got to where we're at when it's a very large increase, two hundred and fifty percent increase.
The sewer rate?
Just a few years back, yeah. Went from sixty to a hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Well, that's, that was-
Now it's another eighty percent.
So, sewer, we're just gonna, that's, that's almost in the black. We're almost ready to pay the sewer debt off. We can close out on one, one more of these site plans, we could probably just pay our sewer debt off and we can eliminate that altogether from our, from our billing structure anyways, Mike.
Then why is the, why is there an eighty percent increase proposed if that's what the case is?
On the sewer, on the sewer debt?
Yeah.
The sewer debt went, uh, sixty dollars annually.
Ready to serve is up sixty dollars annual, water disposal fee is up.
Sewer ready to serve is, that's for sewer maintenance and repairs and infrastructure. If we have a manhole that needs to be rebuilt, it's part of rebuilding the manhole. If we have a, a collapsed sewer line, it's all, all part of it. We gotta, uh, we got, um, a lift station that goes down, that's part of what, the money should be coming out to be paying for the lift station pump. That's what, that's, that's all.
I'm just going about what the prior rate increase was stated and there's no understanding as to how we got to where we need another eighty percent increase.
Well, that was done three, four years ago, whatever it was. I'm not, I mean, again, I'm not gonna go to them and try to have them figure out a problem, which a lot of this problems that we're in-
I'm not asking to find a solution, I'm asking what we're wrong.
Alright.
So that we don't have it, five or six years from now, we're not coming to the residents saying, we, we need another eighty percent increase. And not knowing exactly why.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I think that the increase is very comfortable compared to what we were, what was recommended by the auditor. So.
Can, Mike, is the sewer debt actually to pay off the sewer debt and then the sewer ready to serve is for maintenance and service going forward, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but if we already almost have the sewer debt paid off and we will very soon versus the, the ready to serve increase, then why are we increasing the sewer debt?
To pay, to get it paid down sooner, just a, it's just, it's a-
And it's just temporarily?
It's a razor, it's an increase across the board, but that will be the first thing that comes up.
And then it'll be eliminated once the debt is paid off. We're not gonna keep on charging.
Right, on the sewer debt, right. Exactly. I don't even remember where I was at. You wanna read my motion?
Are we really willing to entertain a different motion, I guess?
What was that, Mike?
Are we willing to entertain a different motion than what you've provided?
As long as it's not really one of these complicated things, I think we could easily accomplish the same thing by having two motions. On the, one of them to approve the increase and then one of them is to approve the-
Well, I have a problem with some of the rates that are increasing without an ex, without a better explanation, so, I guess.
Alright, let's just take a vote on it. We got-
What I have is-
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, a motion by Philbrook, support by DeGiorgio, to approve the fee schedule as presented contingent, contingent upon attorney approval for a period of six months and to reevaluate after that six-month period.
You know, I had to, uh, we form, so we put a committee and we have to make a separate motion, put a committee, we add it to that motion. But then there's not gonna be any contingencies upon you, on the committee if we add it to the motion here without, you know, with, uh-
How about just add, and, and to appoint a committee with the-
Are you gonna have a committee or two committees?
One for water.
I think there's two, two different committees required.
I think one committee would be sufficient to take care of both. I mean, I really do. And I mean, where are you gonna get all this manpower? There's people that want to-
Okay, we can have one committee, but the two issues are different.
Well, we agree on that, yeah. So, with the committee, uh, with the, the form of a subcommittee?
With the forming of a s- subcommittee? With?
With. To evaluate the situation.
Okay.
What do you want it to say?
Everybody's chiming in, to evaluate the situation against sewers.
That will be stated in another motion. And then let's put the considerations in another motion.
I think that would be the best thing, yeah.
To evaluate, to evaluate. So, I have, and to reevaluate after six month, after the six-month period, but you want, within that six months? Within the six-month period. You want a committee formed?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Sooner than later, I don't wanna wait six months.
During the six months.
Right. Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll, roll call Dana, please, yeah?
Crafty?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Tremblee?
No.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Mike will talk more about it later. Um, okay.
Do, um, do you wanna propose a motion, Mike, that states specifically what the commissioner, the subcommittee will accomplish?
I can state some objectives if you guys are willing to consider that.
I, I would like to do that.
Alright, my motion is that the subcommittee established for the water, that there be one committee established, uh, for water and sewer. Uh, that they, that be established within thirty days from this meeting and that they report back within six months from this meeting to this board. And that what they need to consider is one, a ten to fifteen-year projection for both water and sewer based on three, at least three different options to consider. One, or another, an, an option to consider as part of that committee is a write-off of the accounts receivable of all or a portion of the water debt or, and/or sewer debt.
You, you, you're making, if I'm not mistaken, you're making actual things that you want to commit, commit to, um, you're already-
I'm asking them to consider these things. I'm not asking them to do them, to consider them as part of the options.
Sounds to me like it's like you're already stated.
Consideration, consideration can be looked up in the dictionary. It's not a vote, it's not a proclamation, it's not a motion. It's a consideration. And then I think, um, another thing, part of this committee is to understand what went wrong with the last sewer rate increase. And then, and then lastly, they need to consider, um, a relook at the industrial rate increase.
So, these rates are only temporary. I mean, they're only six months and they, we, we're doing it, so anything here can be changed, either for the better, for the worse, whatever.
Okay.
Did you get all that? You're writing as fast as you could, I know.
Could you repeat number four for me, please, Mike?
Which ones did you capture?
I need number four.
Which ones do you have so far?
I have the ten to fifteen-year projection.
Yeah.
Um, write off some or all of the, um, receivable.
Yeah.
And to understand what went wrong with the last-
Sewer rate study and increase. And, and you did miss one of the early ones, which was the, the ten to fifteen-year projections.
With three options.
Three options, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the last one was the meterings for commercial industry, looking at, uh-
You didn't include that though.
Oh, you did not include that.
I think we need to look at the, uh, the metering of the industrial with a, uh,
Okay.
With, with able to meter, um, prime-time usage versus non-prime-time, because that's really what's creating our current cost issue with Great Lakes water.
You also mentioned a penalty for overages.
Yeah, some kind of rate differential, so it's a motivator for the industrial customer to, to do the water during a non-high-usage period, normal high-usage period. That's the only way you're gonna get your rate down from Great Lakes. And Mike, I do appreciate your efforts. Don't, don't discount what I'm saying is not, 'cause I know you've done a yeoman's job. And I do appreciate it personally and, and I know the, the community does. And then I, and, and, and I, I know that sometimes you get frustrated when you can't get help, but I do appreciate you going and trying to reach out for help from people that may have more clout than we do.
Right. You know, you know, I forgot to mention on the, um, I know, I know, I wanted to let the residents know that um, a lot of communities, what they do is instead of having to have to where they gotta raise it, sewer, water rates or utility rates, they have what they call, it's an automatic increase and it's based on our CPI, which is our property index, that basically your property values kinda go up every year and that's how they keep, they have to have these meetings where this, uh, utility rates kinda go up at the same scale. And it's not as noticeable at a one percent like the, the CPI index for twenty twenty-two went up one point oh, oh, three, three percent. So, it's not, you won't really feel it as bad and that's kinda what we're gonna propose to do also with our, our fee schedule. That when we get everything in line, that, that, that utility is gonna go up consistently every year with the CPI. If the CPI goes down, the fees will go down. But, pretty much that's what we're gonna, instead of trying to hit you up with an eighty percent increase in your utilities. Alright, Mike, you put that motion out there, I'll, I'll second that motion then.
Do we get a repeat of the motion, make sure it's, everybody knows what it is?
Let me smokes.
To form a subcommittee established within thirty, within thirty days of this meeting and to report back with the following considerations. Ten to fifteen-year projection with assumed costs for water, sewer, with three options to consider. The write-off of some or all of the receivable, especially water, but sewer as well. To understand what went wrong with the last sewer rate increase and install a metering system to identify overages during peak times.
Well, actually, actually in the industrial to, to meter when they're using the water, when they're using the water.
Which we're at right about the final stages of doing that right now.
Yeah. Thank you, Dana.
Motion by Tremblee, second by me.
Oh, I did wanna add one thing, that they need to report back within six months, if that's not in-
And report back.
Within six months, yeah. There needs to be a time period.
Any other discussion? Whenever you get a chance, Dana will, will do a call.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Crafty?
Yes.
Philbrook?
Yes.
Tremblee?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
I wanna thank everybody for coming out from Colfield, from the neighboring communities, we really appreciate it. My phone is always open. If you got any questions, feel free to reach out to me, give me a call, whatever you need to do. Megan, we take the good with the bad, it's no problem, you know, so, um, just hope for the best and, uh, we'll be in touch. Alright, thanks, everybody.
We did try to be as fair as possible with this all, so.
Hey, Mike, Lisa, thank you for not being vague. You guys should take after them.
Okay, thanks.
It sounds like you gotta all take care of the second meter. Can you like, maybe like queue one and a queue one next to you?
A meter? Oh, yeah, we're gonna- So, yeah, and we're also gonna be putting radios on your meters. Right now, you have, currently, you got touchpads, which I should've sent, mentioned. So, we are gonna put radios on them, so you're not gonna have a guy walking around your house to, you know, doing meter reads also and then we can add- So we are gonna put radios on them, so you're not gonna have a guy walking around your house to, you know, doing meter reads also, and then we can actually get real-time data to find out who may be exceeding those peak flow times during the day, and it does come right here to the billing clerk's office, and she can actually-
And what time, did you say, six to nine PM, or nine to six?